Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bilbo?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Housen?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Sheehan?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Ms. Wacus?
Present.
Mr. McGinnity? Present. We have one member, Mr. Morelli, who's on the phone. Since he's passed the more than three call-ins, we have to have a vote about his participation in tonight's meeting. We have a motion for Mr. Morelli's participation.
So, second.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Haas, on the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, motion carries. Mr. Morelli, you're now part of the meeting.
Thank you everyone. Present.
Going down, recognitions and ceremony proclamations. We have three retirements. Eric Eichelinger, who was Lieutenant and Sheriff's Department for many years. William Kimball, the Case Management Specialist with Drug and Alcohol. And Charles Smith, who was the Correctional Officer at our prison on Water Street. And we'll send out a letter of congratulations and wishing good health going forward. Any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Sir.
Mr. Vogt, second. Ms. Seaman, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried. Public comment, Mr. Griffith.
The agenda item I want to speak about is item number one on the voting session agenda. And I spoke about it at the last meeting as well regarding the abatement of $5,000 for the property owner for that property for Newport Township. And I did state last time I spoke about that, that I do believe that the property is unsafe and it needs to come down. However, I don't think the county should take a $5,000 loss on that when the person who owns the property has 10 other properties besides. Two of them don't have any delinquent taxes on them. Now, I certainly understand if he's in bankruptcy, there's some protection there for him, but clearly I don't think the county should lose $5,000 on that property. We either need to put a municipal lien on it, so if Newport Township sells the property, we get the money, or if he somehow gets out of bankruptcy and gets his financial house in order, then we get our $5,000 from him by virtue of a lien. I think the time for stop, to stop letting people get off the hook for not paying their taxes needs to stop if we need revenue. And I think that's a good way to make that happen. I think that the ability for us to turn it over to Newport Township is certainly worthwhile so they could remove that blight on their area and make a safe condition. But if Newport Township sells that property, I think the county needs to get their $5,000 back as a municipal lien to whoever buys that property if it's ever sold. Thank you.
Thank you. I have three other people indicated who would like to speak, but not on agenda items. So is there anyone else who would like to speak in regards to anything on the agenda in the voting session? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 12th meeting?
No movement.
Ms. Seaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wacus, on the question?
On the question?
Yep.
Is there a way that we could put a lien on that property if they were to sell it? That we could recoup our money?
Well, this is on the minutes.
Oh, okay.
When we get to agenda item number one, I think that's a question you can bring it that tight, please.
Okay.
On the question regarding the minutes of November 12th? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carried. Moving down into the November 18th special meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, on the question?
On the question?
Yes.
We did not adjourn the, or go into recess from the work session to go into this meeting. I don't recall a roll call being taken. I understand that people were present, but I don't, there's a statement of those who were present, but there was not a roll call, nor was there a pledge of allegiance at a moment of silence at the special voting session.
Special meeting?
Was there?
Yes.
Right.
That was a public hearing.
The public meeting.
No, public hearing. Not the voting session.
Oh, the voting session, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
This is the voting session, the special meeting we had?
Special meeting.
Now, I got there, I came just as we were adjourning, Mr. Chair, so I technically was there. I didn't get a chance to vote on the motion. I don't know if that could be reflected in the minutes and the...
You came in late?
Yeah.
Okay.
Better late than never.
Okay.
But if, and if I could, if I, if we can have an addendum as well saying that I support the motion, I sign the document, if that would be appropriate.
Is that appropriate?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
We can add that then?
It's a consideration.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second with that addendum. Mr. Schnee, Mr. Perry, fine with that? Any other questions? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition, any abstentions, none heard, motion carries. Okay, moving over to the back page. We need a motion to adopt a resolution abating the delinquent Luzern County taxes for a property located 125-133 East Main Street, Newport Township. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Vogt, on the question, Mr. Schnee?
On the question, as Mr. Griffith stated, if they were to turn around and sell that partial of land, do we get our $5,000 back? Have we put a lien on that?
Well, we have to, we have to research the process. And there's two, there's three alternatives. One, if that property is in bankruptcy, perhaps we can intervene in the bankruptcy. The second is a lien on that particular property, although I believe because it's being transferred and it's being abated, that may not be an option, but we are looking into it. And the other option is to determine whether we can put a lien on the other properties that this particular owner has. We're doing the research, we're getting all the documents together. I actually spoke to Mr. Griffith last, at the last meeting, saying that we're going to do it. If we cannot be successful for this particular property, what we'd like to do is going forward, prior to maybe any transfer or abatement, put into place what's necessary in order to, at the very least, put a lien for the county, if that's at all possible.
Is there anything we can do with the current resolution?
No.
No?
The resolution would not, resolution could go forward as is. Any other legal action, we would have to come before council for the particular legal action, which we will do.
Which we can follow with.
Yes.
Okay. Can I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, for Mr. Griffith, are the other properties also in bankruptcy or have liens on them?
No.
Okay, so they are free of liens?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, you know, usually we have an agenda submittal sheet that tells us whether it's the manager's recommendation, what our alternatives are, you know, what kind of things might happen if we choose a different alternative or if we don't go with this. And we don't have anything like that for this, this item. Is this the manager's recommendation? I mean, it's under the manager's items here. Is it your recommendation to abate these taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else?
My goodness, Mr. Chair, essentially, that's what we're voting for. It doesn't speak to anything about a municipal lien, we're just voting to bait.
That's right.
So, basically, if, if there's a lien placed on it, then we would benefit if it was sold, but ultimately, it's not controlling in this.
Right.
Correct. And if there is a lien, we will come before council for the approval.
Okay.
I mean, the manager was last week, I'm going to get a chance to ask him questions, but obviously the township supports this very much, so...
Yes.
Oh, yeah, oh, good, oh.
They were here last time and are present tonight?
Yeah. And forgive me, because I was on the phone at that, with the last, I didn't hear everything, but I don't know if, because I, and I know Newport Township has a lot of blight properties, and I know it's an issue across the county. I'm all about the townships helping to come alongside them and help deal with blight. But I don't know if you could speak, sir, to that? Is there anything else that you'd like to share about this particular issue? About this?
You want to come up to the podium, please, so everybody can hear you? Thank you. Can you give us your name and your position with the county township, please?
My name is Joseph Hillen. I'm the Township Manager, Newport Township.
Okay.
And as I stated at the previous meeting, and we, you know, like your support in this, with this issue, because we'd like to get this dangerous situation taken care of as soon as possible. As you can see by the pictures that were in your packet, you know, it's a very dangerous situation to the public.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with questions? We have a motion from Mr. Schnee, second by Mr. Vogt. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a lease agreement between Luzern County and Kingston Township for premises located 11 Carverton Road, Trucksville, Pennsylvania. And I believe this is for the magistrate's office that's located at that facility, is correct?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Mr. Vogt, on the question?
Well, on the question again, there's an agenda submittal. Is this the manager's recommendation?
I really can't give a recommendation on this one, as it came from the judiciary in the Office of Law.
Okay.
And Mr. Shakovsky's here and obviously...
I have a question.
Yes, would you go to the podium, Mr. Shakovsky, please? Is this a recommendation from the judiciary?
Yes, this position, this location has existed as an M&amp;J office for many, many years. We have an excellent working relationship with Kingston Township. They've requested a three-year lease. The lease increases one and three-quarters percent per year. It's, the new lease would be $2,455, and it's generally just covering their increases that they got due to the cost of living increases. I will note today in the paper, there was discussion about how the cost of living for salaries for certain elected officials and so forth, that the, going up 1.9% is the minimum increase for this year. So it's well within reason. The location meets all of our needs and all the guidelines set by the AOPC for a location of this type. And we've requested...
My question is this, though. The cost of living increases are going up.
Okay. The rent's going up, but there's no more money coming into this county by, from AOPC.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Urban.
So, what are you doing to lobby AOPC to get us more money so we can pay these additional costs that keep on going up, rather than going to the well and asking the taxpayers out here in the county to pay more money? That, that's really the answer that I asked, the question that I asked several weeks ago.
Yes, and we answer it every year. Of course, you understand AOPC has no money. AOPC gets no money whatsoever, except through the legislative branch. And you're asking the wrong person to increase the fees and increase the payments. You have to ask the legislative branch. All the money that goes to AOPC is allocated from the state, and the state has consistently kept the allocation to courts flat, no increases. And I would agree with you that if the legislative branch would say, impose a tax on oil extraction, maybe there'd be some money left over to go to pay for court systems. But you're asking the wrong person. First of all, as a matter of law, I must be nonpartisan, and I am not permitted to lobby on these things. And the actual persons who lobby for this should be, the legislators should hear from this council, should hear from you, saying, please fund the court system, and through the court system, give relief to the counties. Because you are correct, over the years, you and I have seen this many times where the state is slowly transferring more and more responsibility to the counties. And I wish there was a way to address it amongst ourselves, but we can't. It's got to be through the legislative branch.
But AOPC gets a bulk allocation of funds, and they determine how those funds are allocated. Who, who in your office interfaces with AOPC? I mean, that's not lobbying, you're talking to another judicial branch, and you're just, I think you need to tell that judicial branch, our costs are going up, and you need to take more of that allocation and send it to Luzern County so we can cover our costs.
Well, unfortunately, the allocations have to go to things like paying salaries for justices and judges and things of that nature, staffing, the IT program, the training, all the things that AOPC run, does to run, to run the court system. That's where that money goes. Funding of this goes through the legislative branch. And again, that's where the money should come from.
I think somebody, though, in your office needs to, needs to fight with AOPC and say, Luzern County deserves a larger allocation. That's not, that's not lobbying the legislature, that's not lobbying elected official, that's lobbying the judicial branch to tell them that this county is constantly being short-changed, and we need some more money.
Are you willing to lobby the legislative branch for more money?
I am.
We should do it together. I'll be glad to help you in any way I can. I'll give you whatever information you need, sir. Okay?
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Hou?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnity?
Yes.
Ten-one. Moving down to number three, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Wexford Health Services Incorporated for the inmate healthcare services. Do we have a motion?
Seven.
Ms. Seaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry? Questions?
I got a question.
Mr. Rakowicz is here, and you can address it to him, please.
Hey, Mr. Rakowicz, good to see you. I'm just looking at the summary here, page 25 of 175, and year two, the, year one, rather, the cost is $2.8 million. Year three, it's $3 million, almost even. And that's over a 5% increase just in three years. And I'm looking at this past year, it was $2.3 million, so it's gone up by...
Almost $600,000.
$600,000, almost $600,000. Wow. How, can you speak to the process, just how it was negotiated? I mean, this is, that's a big leap.
Okay, it is a large leap. However, this isn't for the same services that we were receiving under the current provider. You know that we had a few problems at the facility. We have addressed many of them with this RFP. We are interested in having increased mental health at the facility, increased protocols, increased staff, weekend staff. These are all things that myself and our committee believe are imperative to reducing suicide risks at the facility. So it's not, it's not a dollar-for-dollar increase. I do have four companies that provided us responses to the RFP. I can go through all the details, but the numbers are all very similar, as far as the cost. The reason that we're recommending this company is we believe we're going to get the best service with them. You know, their presentation in person, the questions that we ask them, they're a Pennsylvania-based company, they understand Pennsylvania law, they primarily deal in jails versus prisons, medium-sized jails. A lot of the staff, I mean, transitioning is going to be extremely difficult for our facility, going from one company. We have, you know, I say we have an average daily population of 650 inmates in the prison, but we're, we're taking in 400, 425 inmates every month. That many in, we're getting that many out, we're staying right around 650. We have medical records, intake records on each and every one of them. That's performed, conducted by one of our medical staff at the facility. Those records now need to be transported from our current provider to our new provider, which would be Wexford. One of the reasons I also suggesting Wexford, Wexford doesn't have a proprietary EMR, electronic medical record. The current company, they're going to say that they don't, but it's a little bit more difficult. Whoever would take, three years down the road, six years down the road, hopefully more than six, if we get a new provider, they simply purchase the license for that, and all the records just flow to the next provider, which is a big deal. My hands aren't tied to the company that brought in their own medical record.
So some of the cost is, to make that leap then, too?
Absolutely.
The transition.
Absolutely.
All right, that's helpful.
I also have tonight with me Marianne McKee, who's the Director of Operations for Wexford. So if there's any other questions that I can answer, Marianne McKee will come up and also answer them. Happy to answer any questions anybody has on it.
No, I remember the conversation last year at this time about the mental health issues and the suicide rates, and we want our folks on the ground safer there, too. And that's going to hopefully be an effect as well.
And we've, we've made a lot of improvements already. Many of them operational, but there were a lot of recommendations made that will be implemented with the new health service provider. And you also have to keep in mind, it's not just, you know, a doctor visit. We have people with leukemia that are in the hospital that we have to provide medical care to. Mental health, dental, some eye care that's needed, all the prescriptions. I'm not saying it's a bargain, but to provide 600, you know, and we also have probably the most severe individuals with mental health issues anywhere in the county. We're, we're pretty much the new mental health providers for the state.
Yeah, we are. That's why, that's my last question, actually, too. I was wondering, because of this deal specifically with mental health, are we getting any extra help from the state, or is there any communication? Because I really think that is...
There has been.
That investment's going to help out a lot of other issues that we have.
Tara Vallay from Luzern County, they have provided assistance for us, direction, guidance, and they will be involved with a, at least a quarterly meeting with our next healthcare provider to determine things that are there. We'd like to expand it where, keeping in mind the HIPAA laws, where other agencies in the county, whether they, you know, be county agencies or mental health agencies, that they're getting the updates daily. So they know their clients are in jail, and they're getting out, and that they need an appointment now, and follow-up care afterwards, after release. I mean, it's great that we treat these people when they're in jail the best, you know, we can, but they're going to be back on the street. They're going to be your neighbor, they're going to be living next to you, and we want them to be tied into the services they need as soon as they walk out the door, rather than being off their medications for a couple weeks and something happening.
That's very helpful. Thanks a lot. I think what Mr. Urban was talking about, the funding for the courts, I think this might be an area the state could help us out with, too, maybe amongst all the counties, but...
I'll, I'll take any money we can get.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I guess my, my follow-up on that is, you indicated that there are some clients that MHMR has now that end up in your facility. Does MHMR then take care of those clients, or will MHMR fund Wexler for, for the cost of those clients, or reimburse you for the...
Not on a client-per-client basis, no. They're, they become our client once they're in our jail. They might be co-clients, but they're our responsibility as the correctional facility. MHMR does provide assistance with an individual that's actually in the facility, five days a week, a full-time employee, that is providing services to them. And in addition to that, they also fund a small portion of the mental health program, which you have seen in the revenue line item...
Right.
In the budget that I have presented.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions, Mr. Guard?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowicz, first of all, publicly thank you and your staff for a great job at that inspection.
Thank you. My staff, I mean, I know I was there, but it's my staff are the ones that helped.
And Mr. Ivey too, make sure you tell him through the...
Sure he's listening.
We really appreciate that. The second thing is, maybe, tell us, when someone first comes into their prison, what are some of the things that you do in terms of medically, mental health? What do they do? A prisoner comes in?
They're, I'm going to say immediately seen by correction staff. Our first concern has to be safety and security of the facility. We bring them in, make sure that they're legally committed, the correct paperwork, the judge wants them here. After that, we take all their personal property from them, we inventory it, then we will take them through the process. They'll sit down, actually, with the correctional officer, they'll do a suicide assessment screening for them currently, which is a whole checklist. After that, we'll script-search them. After that's done, they're, the nurse, the nurse will conduct a TB test immediately, height, weight, blood pressure. They will also do another assessment in a more secluded area. Our booking area, there's many people, and we're taking 50, 60 people through there in a shift, in and out. That's where we're doing the work for security reasons. Nurse will have them a little bit more secluded to ask that question. Are you suicidal? Do you have any sexually transmitted diseases? And I can go on, I don't want to be graphic, but, so, when there's more confidentiality, the inmates typically will give us a better answer. That's when they're not fighting with us, as we're trying to book them. They will then be evaluated for classification. I mean, I'm giving you the nickel version of this, but we'll put them on a floor. If there's some trigger that's, was seen, that they scored too high on the assessment, meaning that we believe that they can potentially be a suicide risk, we would place them in one of two watches, a standard watch, a max watch. There's different degrees on that. They would be checked more often, and then they would be evaluated by a mental health professional the next day, which is why I want the seven-day-a-week mental health services provided at the facility.
So that's better than, that this new company we have is much better than the one we had before? You're providing more of that, is that correct, or no?
Well, the RFP changed. So I don't want to say that the company that, you know, we're bringing in, it's hard to evaluate the job performance when they haven't started it. I believe that they will do a better job. I hope I can stand here in three years and say, please extend this contract three more, which means that, you know, they've done the job that we need them to do. And I trust they will, because you recommend it. Thank you.
Seaman.
First of all, I echo Mr. Perry's, as I'm sure the council, on your great work in terms of the prison that you've got kudos for in the newspaper.
Thank you.
I know that one of the questions we had, especially regarding the suicides and mental health issues, you know, when we first started this process of looking for a new provider, was what happens to that person? I mean, you're evaluating and everything on coming in, but then what happens to that person? Say they go to court, and they get slammed with a sentence they don't believe is appropriate. They come back, they're incredibly depressed, or a multitude of things.
Phone call from their wife telling them that she wants a divorce, you know...
Anything like that.
The kid, something happened to their children, that happens all the time currently.
So, one of the questions we had is, what happens then at the jail? We were, you were very good at, or that behavioral program was very good at checking them upon intake. What happens in between when any of those issues arise?
There's two parts to that. There's two parts to that. When a sentence is imposed by the court, if it is a lengthy sentence, my records department immediately notifies mental health. Hey, this guy just got a lengthy sentence, will you please see? And they will see that individual in a timely manner. The phone call or the visit that we don't know about, that's where our standard rounds come into effect. It's very difficult, a person who, you know, declines any suicidal ideation and acts normal, a 15-minute round, or 20-minute or 30-minute round, hopefully, you know, we can stop any bad behavior. Another, I don't hate to say it, we've had inmates come and tell us something's wrong. You know, there's many ways that can happen, that we get informed of it. When we're informed of it, we have a duty to react, and we do a good job of that. I don't wanna see people slip through the cracks. We've instituted a few new policies when people are detoxing, et cetera, and I think that they're helping.
Thank you.
Ms. Urban?
One more. I guess this is for Wexler. Your contract has a fixed price for the next couple of years. Is there, is there a number of inmates that that contract covers? And say, if the facility was to increase by 100 or 200 more inmates, would that cost go up?
It's based upon 650-
Would you go to the podium, please?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Okay, all right.
Young lady, would you go to the podium, please, so everyone can hear?
I can answer, Mr. Urban, also, if you'd like.
I'll let her.
And would you identify yourself so everybody knows?
Yes, my apologies. Marianne McKee, I'm Director of Operations for Wexford Health, and I believe, sir, the question was, does the contract take into account the amount of population that we have within the prison? And it does, it's based upon 650, but there is money we give back-
Right.
-if we don't meet that population standard, and there's additional, a little bit of additional money that you give to us if it goes past that.
So if it's gonna go up to 1,000, how much would that be?
It's based upon a big $4 and some odd cents per inmate per day, so I'd have to have my calculator.
Okay, all right, so there is, there is an increase?
There is, yes.
Yeah, there's still discussion about another prison, a new prison being built, and you know, the last time it was a 1,000-bed facility, you know, and according to what you're saying, 1,000 would increase the cost of this contract, and in no wonder the collective bargaining agreement, 1,000 would also increase the number of COs that are required, because the numbers are spelled out the same way, and the number of COs that are required in a facility are based upon the population of the facility.
The number of, that's certainly not my end of the deal, but yes, it works much the same. You have to be able to have the correct amount of stock for those that are under your roof.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Just one. Mr. Kovacs, out of the, you said there were four responses to the RFP, correct?
Correct.
And Wexford, are they, they were the only Pennsylvania-based company?
That is correct.
So we would be doing business with someone in-state, then, as opposed to taking this out of?
That is correct, but it was not a determined-
No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking you, out of the four you got-
Yeah.
-Wexford is the only Pennsylvania-based company?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Haas? Just one quick question, too, from Ms. McKee. Welcome to Wilkes-Barre.
Thank you.
Contract, it goes up from 2.8 million up to 300,000 in year three, so that's what I can tell with my basic math, about 5% every year. Is that a standard increase when Wexford has contracts with corrections facilities?
That is pretty standard. We, of course, have to try to keep pace with growing wages, and that's typically more than 60% of our contracts, and it's beginning to be very competitive out there as far as securing appropriate healthcare staff for us. So if we don't build an incremental increase in, then we find that we don't end up being able to retain quality staff for you, and certainly that's not a position we wanna put you in.
So they do work for Wexford, they're not contracted, they're-
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What's the total capacity the prison could hold?
Well, I mean, we're at, for labor and industry, it would be 530 in our main facility, and then we would also have 258 at our minimal offenders unit, so-
So the most, it could go up to 100 clients.
Well, before, we'd have to ship them out at $70 a day.
Yeah.
But-
Well, I mean, that would increase their price.
Correct, that would increase their price. Now, the other side, there were a lot of things that were built into the RFP, Mr., you know, council members, that if they don't provide the staffing, the hours of staffing that they're supposed to, that there's a time and a half penalty. I wasn't happy with just straight time, so we increased that, because we would have to pay time and a half to fill a slot. With that, maybe they'll get temporary people. My goal is that they fill every spot, every person becomes familiar with our facility, they know the procedures, they know the policies, and, you know, it runs like clockwork. That's what our goal is by end of year one, that we have no turnover, and that everybody comes very familiar with their job, and they retain them, and we move forward.
Going back to suicide for a minute, say before they commit crime, they're in a mental health center where they tried to hurt themselves. Is that information provided to you when they come into a prison? In that mental health center, that maybe four years ago, they tried to hurt themselves?
No. We would, we would potentially find that out, but not during the booking process. The other agencies, if they were kind of looking for them, they would find out and then say, hey, they have a history with such-and-such counseling or this agency. The rest of it would be self-reported. They can walk in and-
Is that question presented to them-
Yes.
-when they come in?
Absolutely.
That they, if they-
Do you have a mental health history? Do you have any sort of count- I didn't go through the entire checklist, but when it's done two times by corrections, security staff, and then by medical staff, it's one of the questions, at least, and that's asked at least one time.
And I echo the sentiments of the other councilman hearing, that your rank and file under your leadership do a great job at not too high of a pay, to be honest with you.
I believe my staff-
There weren't every penny that, out there, so-
I depend on my staff.
Tell your men, thank you very much, the rank and file.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add quickly a little bit to that last question, as far as, do we have any information or history when they come in as far as mental health history from the community or community agencies? We don't, he's right, we don't typically, but the move that you're making to have an electronic health record that stays with you is yours, does provide some of that history. So some of that, we will see, that this particular person was suicidal with the last incarceration, and that is invaluable to protecting him in the next incarceration.
Other questions?
Mr. Kovacs, I just wanna add, prior to you stepping away from the podium, 'cause I don't know if you'll be at that podium again before my tenure, before I step away from the podium, but I know you've heard it from other councilors, but I just want to tell you that my time here on council, and please share this with Mr. Hyder and the remaining people on your staff, and as Mr. Schnee said, all your workers, I've been so impressed with everything I have ever heard and seen with the job that goes on at that facility, and what an important job in helping this area to be safe, and the job that you guys do and the services that you provide in a, I mean, a super dangerous environment. So if you could please, you know, for this whole council, but I just wanted you to hear from me, how impressed I've been with your work, and with Mr. Hyder, and all the employees at that jail. Impressive, impressive.
It doesn't always get out that way, but I'm actually impressed with my staff also.
Good, that's good.
And I'm happy with, you know, ecstatic with the job that they do usually. There's always a usually.
Well, you know what they say, a really good staff makes the guy at the top look better.
Absolutely. No question.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion from Ms. Sagan, second by Mr. Perry. You adopt the resolution? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Edmond?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Huzz?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, thank you.
Moving down to number four, we have a motion to adopt the resolution declaring a vacancy on the Luzerne County Council Board of Elections and Registration. You have a copy of the resignation from Attorney Wettel. Just so it's clear, Mr. Wettel had served as the chair by the charter provision. The county council appoints four people to that board. Those four people get together and decide on the fifth person, who then becomes the chair. So even though we're declaring the vacancy, we will not be filling the vacancy for the chair. Okay?
Some of it.
Motion?
Yep.
Mr. Urban?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schnee, on the question?
Yeah, just a question.
On the question?
Good.
Mr. Urban, then Ms. Hauck?
Yeah, the question is, if, and I don't see this in the charter, when I looked at the charter, if another member who currently serves on the board is appointed as chair, then I guess we'll have vacancy.
You'll have what?
A vacancy, yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
And I don't think there's any restriction against the members who are currently appointed by us from appointing one of their own as a chair.
They would have to resign from the board first, but there's no other restriction.
Right, okay.
Ms. Hauck?
I would disagree that there's not a restriction on someone who's currently serving on that board from being appointed as the chair, because the charter says that the four members, or a majority of them, will appoint a fifth member to serve as chair, and we have policies and procedures about how we appoint to boards and commissions, authorities, boards and commissions. And those policies and procedures say that the position, the vacancy, will be declared by council, and then it will be advertised, applicants will be sought, there will be an open interview process, and anybody who is eligible could be appointed. Right now, a sitting board member is not eligible to be appointed as the chair of the board, because it has to be someone who is not seated on the board to be appointed. So I would like to offer an amendment to this resolution. In the last section, where it says, "Now therefore be it resolved that Luzerne County Council declares a vacancy on the Luzerne County Board of Elections and Registration due to the resignation of a member," I would like to add the following, and directs the Board of Elections to fill the vacancy following the procedures consistent with those adopted by this council for filling vacancies in authority boards, authorities, boards, and commissions. I don't think it should have to be said, but I believe in this case it does have to be said, because I believe that some votes have been promised, and I believe that promising votes, or promising an appointment to an authority board or commission in this county, is antithetical to the principles of home role. It's exactly not what we have been doing since 2012. I don't believe anybody should be promised an appointment without following the procedure. Nobody should be appointed to that seat, and that's my amendment.
That's your motion, and we have a second for that amendment?
Second, Ms. House's amendment.
Ms. Hauck, Mr. Haas? On the amendment, questions? Ms. Sagan?
Can a, may a person resign from his position and put in his application for chairman?
Anybody can resign.
Yes, Ms. Edmond.
But I will tell you that what I've heard is that there is a procedure that's been outlined, so that someone who is sitting on the board is guaranteed that they will be appointed to be the chair. I don't believe that's correct. I don't believe that's in line with the principles of this government. And so I believe that the position needs to be advertised, and it needs to be filled according to the way we've done it. If anyone wants to resign from any board, authority board or commission, and apply for that vacancy, they're certainly welcome to do that, but nobody should be promised an appointment.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes.
Just so, Linda, Ms. House, so I understand, in the past, I don't know if this has ever happened in the past or not, but if it has, as a matter of course, if someone who is the chair resigned, wouldn't automatically the people interested be interviewed for a new appointment? And then, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought then the members would vote and appoint someone from the, from their own? In other words, from five people?
No.
No?
No.
How would they know?
The charter says, we appoint four members.
Right.
Those four members, or a majority of them, will appoint a fifth member who shall serve as the chair.
Okay, well, how would they find this fifth person?
They, they interview. In 2012, we had open interviews for that fifth position, after which the Board of Elections, the four sitting members of the Board of Elections, caucused and then made an appointment, and we ratified that appointment.
Okay, so who convened the interviews? Was it the ABC Committee, or-
Well, we certainly have a list, an eligibility list of people.
Right, right.
I'm sure there are people that are interested in being on the Board of Elections, but without advertising a vacancy, no one knows who else might be interested in it.
Right.
We're declaring a vacancy.
Right.
It needs to be advertised.
Mm-hmm.
Interested applicants can be, can be interviewed.
Mm-hmm.
You can certainly do it, considering that the Board of Elections are the people that are going to appoint them, I would strongly suggest that they're here, but we have an eligibility list.
But it's the ABC Committee that does the interviews, correct?
It can be, or you can have the Board of Elections do it. I would personally do it as part of the, as, under the auspices of the ABC Commission, with the understanding that we are not making the appointment. But you can certainly interview people for more than one authority board and commission at the same time.
No.
I would have the members of the Board, the Board of Elections, present for those interviews, or they could convene their own interviews. But the applicants have to be solicited publicly. It has to be advertised, and they have to be publicly solicited, and then all interested applicants need to be interviewed.
Oh, I don't believe we ever, the ABC Committee ever interviewed for the chairmanship.
I don't think we did.
No, they didn't.
And I don't think, I don't, I know we didn't do it in 2012, the Board of Elections did it themselves.
And we didn't do it for Mr. Wettel, either.
Right.
So it's always been done-
But it's certainly, yeah.
It's always been done by the four members that had been appointed by council.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with advertising, I don't have a problem with people submitting an application, but I do believe that the appointment falls directly with the four people that are on that board.
I recommend that it's the auspices of the election board to make the determination as to the chair.
So we have an amendment?
Is it possible to, I've only elected-
Excuse me.
Possible to-
Excuse me. This is a discussion among council, you'll have your chance to speak. We have an amendment by Ms. Hauck.
Wait, before we go into this, who stated, Mrs. Hauck, somebody was promised this position? I know nothing of this. Would you vote further?
Well, I did send an email to council. When I read Judge Wettel's letter of resignation, there was a last line which indicated that he was informing us of who his successor as chair was going to be. And I pointed out, I sent an email to all council, and I reminded everybody that that's not how it works. The charter says that the Board of Elections appoints the fifth member, and that person's the chair. In fact, there are a limited number of people who could not be appointed as that fifth member, and it's like probably all the elected officials that are here, probably all of us, none of us are eligible to serve as the fifth member of the Board of Elections, and none of those four members can serve as the chair. They have to appoint a fifth member. So there has to be an appointment made by that board. Judge Wettel was, and Ms. Procollo replied to it and said that, you know, notwithstanding that line, you know, that was added to that letter, that we would be following the charter. But my point is that there's already been a name mentioned as someone who would be the chair of the Elections Board, and it's a sitting member, and that's not consistent with the charter.
But as-
That's correct, and that member would have to, any member that would be considered for the chairmanship would have to resign.
Well, I would say they would have to resign before they can be interviewed, because they're not eligible to be appointed until they're, until they're not on the board.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, right?
Correct.
And I think that, you know, Judge Wettel wrote that, you have a copy in your packet. That's his thoughts. I don't know what that means with anyone else, whether it be another member of the board itself, or anyone else who would be a part of it.
And I would just like to say, this is not a knock on anyone who's serving on the board. I think the world of the people who volunteer to serve on all of our authorities, boards, and commissions. I served as the chair of the Authorities, Boards, and Commissions Committee for a long time. I set up these procedures, and, you know, they've been working well, and there's a thing called procedural justice. You have to, have to follow a legitimate procedure to make appointments. So that's all it's about, that's all that my amendment is about. It's not knocking anyone at all for any of the work that they've done or intend to do for the county, but we do have to have a clean procedure.
Anyone else?
No, I agree, and I think, I think the election board needs somebody that's familiar with election law, and that's familiar with the process, and that's, so if someone, someone on the board, in my opinion, if someone on the board, and I don't know any names, or if someone on the board wants to resign and apply for it, fine, let them do it, I don't care, because they probably know the election law, and they, and they know the process, because they've been there. It's, I've been always happy with the decisions of the election board over the last eight years. I think sometimes they didn't go, they relied too much on the solicitor's opinion, rather than reading the law and making up their own mind based upon what the solicitor said, because, you know, the solicitor's handbook even tells elected officials that, you know, they can give you advice, but you don't have to follow that advice if you don't believe that that advice is correct. And I think sometimes there's been advice given to the election board by the solicitor that hasn't been correct, based upon my sitting on the board for 10 years.
Anyone else?
I just want to note for the record that in Section 8.04A, it does say that the Board of Elections shall be replaced by a reconstituted Board of Elections and Registration that shall exercise all powers and duties now or hereafter conferred on it by the Charter, the Administrative Code, and other county ordinance or resolutions. So they do have to comport with the Administrative Code. Thank you.
So we have an amendment, by Ms. Howe, second by Mr. Huzz, that directs the Board to fill the vacancy by procedures adopted by council, correct?
Yes.
Everybody clear of that? So we'll have a roll call on the amendment, please.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Huzz?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Okay, so now we go back to the original motion. Mr. Urban, Mr. Schnee, are you all right with adding the amendment?
Yep.
Mr. Schnee?
Yep.
Yes? All right, so now we have the motion to adopt the resolution with the amendment that was approved. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vogt?
Yes.
Ms. Wacus?
Yes.
Mr. Bilbo?
Yes.
Mr. Huzz?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Howe, would you, Ms. Howe, would you send me the actual language of the? Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Down to public comment. Ms. Olet.
I have, I had some very carefully timed remarks, but I just, I want to make a remark as far as Ms. Howe's remarks, and she is absolutely correct. I understand these things, although Judge Wettzel's remarks about me were a great compliment. I have no intent of resigning the board, besides, I understand the charter, if someone resigns from the board, they have to wait another year to take that position.
That's right.
I have no interest in serving as chair of the Elections Board. That being said, as you all know, I serve on the County Board of Elections. I was also a member of the committee convened to select the new voting equipment for Luzerne County. From my communication with all of you, I think you know my position on Dominion's voting system for Luzerne County, and just to make it clear, I think Dominion is the worst choice for the county. And that's not just my position, it's the unanimous decision of both the committee and the Board of Elections. Six counties in Pennsylvania have implemented full ballot marking devices, systems similar to the systems we considered for Luzerne County. These are Berks, Green, Lebanon, Potter, and Washington Counties. They've implemented the ESNS Express Vote PS200-based systems. Crawford County implemented the Dominion Image Cast system. An informal survey, survey of voters and supervisors of elections in those counties pointed out no major concerns with any of the equipment in question, with the exception of several voters in Crawford mentioning the slowness of the Dominion scanners. This is an important point to keep in mind, and I'll get back to that later. Please also keep in mind the populations of those counties relative to Luzerne County. Berks, Luzerne, Washington, Lebanon, all share populations in excess of 140,000 people. Crawford, Green, and Potter are significantly smaller. My concerns with the Dominion system are many, including the setup for poll workers. There are a lot of interconnecting components, and though Dominion have taken steps to mitigate this, the potential for crippling problems on election day remain. Battery backup, storage space, and just a significant number of components to monitor and maintain concern me. But my main concern is the time it takes for an individual voter to cast a ballot, both in the polling place and in central scan at the Bureau of Elections on election night. In recognition of this, Dominion have revised their proposal to include 750 ballot marking devices, an increase from 720, an increase from one to two central scanners, and an increase from 200 to 230 polling site scanners. That's okay, but it means the cost advantage of Dominion system becomes moot. Changes in the election code will make the vote selection process slower at the polls for any equipment we choose. The bottleneck will be the scanners, a component that actually counts the vote. Dominion's scanners process 30 to 45 voters per hour, averaging three votes cast per minute or 20 seconds per vote. That number, 20 seconds, follows for the central scan as well. Let's pause for 20 seconds to consider this. Don't want to do that, because you're going to run over your time. Well, that's 10 seconds, all right? The average scanning time for the other systems we considered is three or four times faster. Let's say six seconds per vote cast. Consider next year's elections. All eyes are going to be on Luzerne County. We know this. Turnout will be high, there will be lines, delays, voter frustration, and possible walkouts. We owe it to the voters of Luzerne County to consider the alternatives, to provide the most efficient elections possible. Dominion may be fine for a smaller county, but it is the worst choice for us, and I urge you to reject Dominion. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Babys?
I too am going to read, because three minutes goes by quickly. I'm back. The advisory committee vote for new voting machines was seven for ESNS and one for Hart, and not one vote for Dominion. And the reason you see me and you see Peter Olet speaking out for ESNS and not for Dominion is because five other committee members who didn't recommend Dominion all worked for Luzerne County. Can you imagine the purchasing director, or the director of administrative services, or the assistant director in the election bureau, or someone from IT, or a solicitor for Luzerne County standing here at a council meeting telling their boss, Mr. Pedri, that his selection is not the right one? While we overwhelmingly voted for ESNS, if Mr. Pedri selected Hart, I really don't know if we would be here. They were a very solid second choice. Dominion still did not get one vote from the committee. I recently spoke with the Deputy Secretary for Elections and Commissions for the Department of State in Harrisburg, who was very helpful and very forthcoming, and one of my concerns, among many, was regarding the selection of voting systems throughout the Commonwealth. And I wanted to clarify my research, so I asked Mr. Marx, who did the selecting of voting machines in other home rule counties as well as commissioner counties? Because it appeared to me, in my research, that Luzerne County was the only one that operated as we did, with no input from the election board and, and only the county manager making a recommendation. And the deputy secretary said, and I quote, "Luzerne County is unique." And then he added, and again, I quote, "Boards in other counties have worked hand in hand with council or commissioners to establish which voting system was correct for their county." And I thought, oh, God, wouldn't that have been fabulous? But wasn't to be. And our county solicitor was correct with her pronouncement that election boards don't purchase voting equipment, and we know they don't, of course they don't, but election boards do recommend voting systems. And then council controls the purse strings. So to you council members, and to Mr. Morelli on the telephone, and to you, Ms. Howe, you were correct in your October email to your fellow council members and your op-ed in the newspaper, when you stated that council should not be put in the position of selecting a vendor for voting machines, and therefore I encourage all members of council to vote no to the county manager's recommendation to purchase a Dominion voting system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffith?
I have a couple of items I want to address. The first one is the abatement of the property taxes for that property. The word "abatement" means it's eliminated. So you voted to eliminate the tax. There's no way you're going to go back and go after the person for the tax now. It's been abated. So I would certainly hope that that would have been tabled rather than voted on, so the Office of Law could have done the research, even though they had two weeks to do the research before the resolution came to the table. But right now, it's been abated. This council's abated it, so you're not going to get any money now, contrary to what the solicitor just told you. I don't think it's going to happen. It can't happen. The word "abatement" means it's gone away. Also, I have, on the voting machines, the position I have on the voting machines is that the state law entitled 25 says, and I brought this up at the Bureau of Elections meetings many times, they're the ones that make the decision on what machine to buy, according to the state statute. But as Ann said, Luzerne County is unique. It sure is. You want a little bit of Luzerne County truth here, as Mr. Pedri said it the last, last time we met at the Nanticoke Municipal Building, a little bit of truth is, this county's becoming more and more a dictator form of government. The council is losing their power, and the manager's taking it away, and every board and commission in this county is losing their power, and the manager's taking it away. This is one more step that the manager gets supreme power over this county, and he gets to rule. Right, wrong, or indifferent, he gets to rule, and that's not the way it was designed. It was designed in state law for the Board of Elections to make the recommendation. Why are we not accepting the board's recommendation? Why are we just circumventing everything that they did and just going with the other vendor? Maybe somebody needs to investigate to see if there's some vested interest in Dominion getting the contract. I don't know, but I'm just saying. If the boards made the decision, why don't they follow it? I have one, oh, on the, in the charter also, regarding Mr. Wettzel's letter of resignation, where he said that Mr. Olet was going to take the position, and the solicitor said he has to resign? In the charter says if he resigns, he can't hold that position. He can't even apply for it for one year. There's a one-year cooling off period in our charter. So thank goodness that Mr. Olet doesn't want the job, because he would have been told he can resign, and then he wouldn't even have a position on the board, and we can't afford to lose a person like Peter Olet on the board, because he's gotten bad legal advice. The charter says he cannot sit on that board if he resigns for one year. So the theory is, while you resign and then you can apply for the chairman's job, is folly. But again, you know, why would, why would we follow the charter? That would be silliness in this county. We just don't do those things here. Also, in the voting agreement, it says Fayette County at the bottom. You might want to correct that. It is not Fayette County, it's Luzerne County, in the bottom of the deliverables, and if we get rid of the 186 batteries that we're going to have to buy, we'll have enough money to buy ESNS's machine, as the board wants to.
May I reply my, probably 15 seconds?
No.
I just, there was nothing nefarious with the election board. It was a comment that beats the deputy of, is the vice chair, and it did come up in conversation. It was not nefarious.
I don't think anybody believes it's nefarious, okay? You know, the Board of Elections and Registration has a lot of tough work to do at different times, but I think they've successfully managed that, so I don't think there's any negatives there associated with that at all. Anyone else in the audience who would like to address council at this time? Ms. Shiner?
As long as we're on the subject of the Board of Elections, and Mr. McGinley, I'm glad you agree with what's been stated so far with the charter. The charter actually says, further, "For a period of one year after leaving office, no member of the Board of Elections and Registration shall serve as a county employee, be appointed to, or serve as, an employee of any county authority, board, or commission, except as may specifically be provided for in this charter." Michael May, last year, left the Board of Elections and was immediately put on the Blighted Property Review Committee. Now, he is on there, he works for free, and that's wonderful. But he was appointed to it. He didn't walk in off the street and say, "Hey, Harry, I'm here and I'm taking over as your solicitor for this organization." He was appointed to work as the lawyer for the Blighted Property Review Committee, and it is also in direct violation of this charter, and I've brought it up before to this council, and this council needs to do something about it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Second.